And complying with chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas government code, I call to order a retreat of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Monday, February 20, 2023 at 6:03 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at AISD's central office to conduct this meeting. We will move to approve the agenda. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Tucker.
Second.
Okay. Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Tachata to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes unanimously. Secretary Boswell, you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge of Texas Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Juror de la verdad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y la República te representa, una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos. Honor to the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to it. Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Te honro bandera de Texas, te juro de verdad Texas, un estado bajo Dios, único y indivisible.
Thank you. All right, we will now recess that open meeting at 6:04 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas government code, sessions 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, and 551.071. When we are finished with the exec session, we will reconvene to the open meeting. Thank you. We will now reconvene the open meeting at 6:57 PM. And we will, we are very excited to have Robert, what was your last name?
Alfaro.
Robert Alfaro here with us, live in person from GR recruiting. And we have on Zoom, we have Gary and Gary Ray and Gloria, Gloria, what's your last name?
Davis.
Davis, that's right. Well, thank you all for being here. And we are celebrating Trustee Boswell's birthday, so there's cake. Thank you all very much. Okay, so you all have an agenda. I think we got new ones printed out that are corrected, so thank you a lot for doing that.
What time does we resume?
6:57. All right, so I guess at this time, Rob, I'll pass it on to GR recruiting and you can begin leading us in our conversation.
Okay.
We've got the, okay, Robert's there.
So Gary, go ahead and start us off and then we'll just chime in.
Sure, we're going to maybe start out at least from the agenda standpoint. The overall goal tonight is approve the timeline and talk about the stakeholders and if we get to a couple of the other items on the advertisement and salary, so that when we leave, we've got a pretty good game plan so that we can move this process forward. And one of the things that was given to us as a task and when we interviewed with the committee about whether a closed search or an open search or partial. And I think the first item that we might want to look at is, you know, to determine the openness of the search. And there's lots of ways to do a search that we've been involved with. And one of the things that we need to keep in mind is our ultimate goal is to involve folks in the process, but at the same time be able to not have the process drive the candidates or determine who's going to apply, who's not going to apply. So there's a fine line on that. And so one of the items we might want to talk about is how we want to approach the last part of the search because we're very much in tune of coming in and meeting with various stakeholders. And we blocked out on our draft timeline for that to take place. So we'll certainly want to do that and have at the front piece of the search process is to bring people to the table to allow them to have a discussion with us regarding the profile. But the latter part of it is that the candidates will be much, very much interested in, which often will drive the search, is the openness. You can have a closed search, which a lot of districts in Texas are most of do, or you can do a little bit of a partial search, which, I mean, closed and open, meaning that when do we bring stakeholders into the process? And when do we bring members of the public in? So I think that's a conversation we might want to have and open that person discussion with the Board.
Right. So let's, I mean, so let's start thinking about, I'm wondering, Gary, can you also talk about, can you talk a little bit about like the pros and cons of different levels of openness and kind of like what you've seen?
Sure, I can, and I know Robert and Gloria can chime in as well. But the pros of a closed search is the candidate does not get exposed, meaning that they don't get the job, their career, particularly superintendents, that they have applied, they've reached out, you know, to apply for a professional advancement, but it really does not harm them in their district. And often it's just not about them. Sometimes they might be running a body issue or something, and if it gets out there that they are applying, it could hurt the body issue, for example, and there are other issues as well. So you're going to get more candidates as the process goes and candidates are not exposed versus if you open the search up and your top two or three candidates or whatever are going to be exposed, then that's going to cut down the pool. Your assistant superintendent deputies in that line of work, in this line of work, you know, will maybe go out there, not all of them, but they will go out there. But your sitting superintendents, particularly with the pandemic that's taken place, they're very reluctant, the ones that you're probably going to want to talk to, not the ones that, you know, running away from the posse, so to speak, you know, the ones that you're going to want to talk to are the ones that are doing a good job. So a more closed, I don't say secretive, but because it's not, but more, that you go to expose the candidates in this process, it will have an impact on the candidate pool. The flip side of that would be, would be is that there is a strong need and desire, I think, from the Board and the committee is that we do want to get some of our stakeholders involved in the process because we just feel that that's necessary, that the public, you know, participates. And we certainly don't have a problem with that, it's just how we, how we do that. And actually, if we keep it in such a way that candidates, if there's not a whole lot of exposure, the candidates might like that, part of it to get a chance to meet, you know, a few of the stakeholders, but it's a very thin line. Just keep in mind that the process, we got to be careful, the process doesn't drive the candidate pool.
Then Gary, you want to mention with the partial, I think, where you have a hybrid of the two, we have done that as well. And basically, more toward the end of the surge, maybe with the finalists, we then could bring in some community members that could be part of the process. Districts have done it where they've had 20 to 25, 30 people have, be able to come to a forum and listen to the two finalists or three, usually it's just two. Or they could be part of the closed with the Board where the Board is interviewing the final two. And that way they can listen, but it always is made clear, whatever format you use or however they come into the process, it is the Board's decision. We just have to keep repeating that. And I know we tell people that, but you know, sometimes they get the idea that, oh, well, we select, well, yes, you did, it went away, but it is the Board's decision. And then even before that, you have, like Gary said, you've had stakeholders come, you have them be involved, and you, serious communication, that's a big key of this. The more you keep communicating every step of the way to the public, then that does help people to feel that they've been involved because they've heard what you are doing, they've been able to ask questions along the way if they need to, and so on. And then the last part, Gary, is the totally open.
Yeah, I think that we have found in partial and open it what really works best, and it's kind of a hybrid, is that when the Board gets down to the top, you know, the candidate first round, we usually meet with the Board, you know, we provide all the materials to the Board, we give everything because we work for you folks. And then we certainly get to a pool of candidates, I don't know how many there might be, depending on the quality of the pool, it could be anywhere from eight, nine, 10, 11, or whatever that number is. We're not going to have a specific number, it's just because we don't know what the pool's going to look like. But let's assume it's anywhere from eight to 10, you know, maybe 11 of the top candidates. We certainly will explain to the Board why we got to that piece, and we certainly will have the Board, you know, look at the materials, and that's part of our timeline. But eventually, the Board will come up and say, these are the top four or five folks, candidates, or maybe six that we would really like to interview for the, you know, for the first round. And the Board will go ahead and usually does that, and they get it down to the top two or three people. And then that's when you might want to bring in any stakeholders involvement. And what we found works best is if you're going to bring in some stakeholders, have them sit in on a, in a closed meeting with the Board, because that way we can tell the candidates when we're recruiting them is that the community's going to be involved, but there's going to be, and that's usually folks that the Board has chosen. We don't choose those people, that's a hard job. You know, you know your folks better than we do, but the smaller the group, the better off we are, because if it gets too large, you know, then it's just more of a chance where somebody's name from a confidentiality would get out and it could hurt somebody's career. So those people can sit in, those folks that you choose from the public stakeholders and whoever they may be, and we certainly can provide an impression sheet for them, and then the Board can go through and determine, you know, who is going to be the finalists, as they say in Texas. So that works probably the very best, and it will also help us if we go that route. I'm not saying we are, but if we go that route, I think it will engage the public, but at the same time, it will allow us to do a better job of getting a stronger pool of candidates that are willing to go through this process from a confidentiality standpoint.
So if I could kind of summarize what the situation would be. An open search will diminish your pool of candidates because those that are sitting superintendents are not going to want to talk with the Board for fear that the Board is going to say, well, if you want to leave, why don't you leave now? There's the other issue, and that is, if the Board finds out that this candidate, like it happened with one school district in Texas, this candidate was their number one, and it leaked, the names leaked, and the Board, when they found out that he was applying, gave him a raise and gave him more years of his contract to keep him, and that was their number one candidate. And so there are risks. On the other side of closed session, you're going to have more participants and more sitting superintendents. And like Gary said, those that are not sitting superintendents right now, that are deputy superintendents or top level administrators from districts, that's what they want, they want a superintendent's job. So you as a Board has to weigh those differences. What we're suggesting is that perhaps maybe a hybrid where the first round, we bring you the 10 to 12, you get to see them on video, they answer some questions, you look at the resumes, these are the ones we've picked that closely match that profile. And so once you see those, you decide, how many of those do we want to bring back for a face-to-face interview? And if you say three, four, five, then at that point, you can select like five community members or six community members. I wouldn't say too many community members, if more you have, then there's going to be some disparities and discussions. If you're hiring this person, but now you're bringing in a group of representatives to sit in while you are conducting the interviews of those three, four, or five people that you bring in to face-to-face interviews. And the public sits in the background, listening, taking notes, paying attention, they will then interact with you at some point, say, this is who we like, and this is the reason why this is who we think should be here, or so forth and so on. And so now you still run that risk of having maybe three or four of them say, we like this person, and you're saying, no, but we really like this person. Ultimately, it's your choice, but you get the community involved. We'll have confidential agreements, confidentiality agreements that they'll sign, and we just keep our fingers crossed and nobody says anything.
Now, Robert, what we could do on this, if the Board wants to, usually we do it the second round, not the first round. The first round, Board narrows it after their first round of interview, because the Board is going to have, there's going to be two rounds of interviews, because they're going to take the sixth day to get it down to the top two or three, and that's when we probably are bringing the community. They're not going to be interested in the people that the Board's not interested in. But the, what you could do, if rather than just have them sit there and they could listen to the interviews, you know, if the Board wants to, they could, you know, those, if they want to have a question or two, which we could work with the committee to involve them, they could ask a question or two as well, you know, since they're in the room. And I've done it that way, where we've had the Board, and we've also had maybe four or five, you know, community members, maybe six, that they can ask a question because I've worked with them as well as with the Board of developing questions, so that rather than just sitting there, they get a chance to participate. But eventually, the Board is going to have to determine who they like, and there's a, what I call, the impression sheet, because, you know, in all reality, they can't vote, you know, but you folks can vote, but you can get their impression of the two or three candidates, and it's not on that sheet of who you should hire, it's what their impression. But you can actually involve them to ask a question, and that's another way of engaging the community people in the interview process.
Thank you.
And to add to that, and then when it comes to the discussion, those individuals probably would not be in the room when you get down to your final discussion with those impression sheets and being able to review those, but then the individuals are not in the room.
Yeah, because eventually the Board's going to have to, we can work out those logistics, but that, but you know, that's one of the ways, this hybrid, and Gloria and I and Robert are talking about, would probably do a couple of things. One, it involves the community, it would involve them, you know, in the room when the candidates are there, and they can even, you know, ask questions, and we could do that by design. And at the same time, it would give, it would still keep the pool somewhat strong, you know, we may lose a few people that might not want community people, they're just because they're afraid of a leak of their name getting out. But I think most of them, the smaller we would have our community, and we could explain that, that's the confidentiality, I think it would keep your pool fairly strong and probably make most people happy. We're not going to make everybody happy, but.
Thank you.
Gary, I think we saw, Robert, was there a hand going up in the room?
Yeah, we have several questions. We'll start with Trustee Lugo.
Yeah, I think we need to let them ask questions.
Yeah, who else had questions? Foster. Okay, so we'll just kind of go. We'll start with Trustee Lugo.
So one of the things that I remember from the 2020 search, and that was a unique time, right, was that there were at least two, maybe three, community groups or coalitions that worked together to create a list of, it may have been 15 questions, maybe 20. And they asked at that, the Board at that time, they asked, could we get the top three candidates to reply to these questions? You don't even have to tell us their name. We don't need to know that this is Jane Doe and that, right? Candidate A, B, and C, we want to know. And that's one of the things that I love about Austin. I don't like cedar fever, but I love community engagement, right? And so I keep hearing the same, I know that the information you all are giving us is based on, you know, extensive experience and what you've seen firsthand and what you all have seen, you know, across several, gosh, hundreds of searches. And I would really love to like challenge the collective us to find a way to be far more collaborative, because I think that's where the creativity of community engagement can actually set the next superintendent upward success.
Thank you.
I had the, I was going to ask what experience you've had with exactly what Trustee Lugo raised, the idea of community or, you know, generated questions delivered to a set of finalists and an opportunity for them to reply, and that would remain anonymous unless they chose to self-disclose, and that would become part of the consideration. So I had the same question.
I really don't see that as a problem. Do you, Gary? Did you hear the statement?
Yeah, I heard a little bit of a statement of getting questions from the community, is that, is that what we're talking about?
And to be specific, a set of questions that they could reply to anonymously, like if you had three finalists, there would be a questionnaire delivered, they could respond anonymously or choose to self-disclose, but that would be a way for the community to get a sense of that there's three of them.
I don't see that as a problem at all.
I don't see that being a problem. I mean, we'd have to work through the logistics, you know, of that, but I don't see it as a problem. I mean, sometimes when we have done searches, we've asked the community when we've been out in these open forums, what kind of questions you'd like to see, you know, the Board asks. So that's, that's not unusual thing from our process, is to gather up information that, you know, what types of questions you'd like to see the Board ask. So we certainly could harvest some of those, figure out a way out of doing, but we've done it before.
Thanks. Trustee Hunter, did you have anything?
I think Trustee Boswell was first.
Oh, okay. I mean, we could do it either way. I was just, but we can do it, but.
Okay. So a couple of things, speaking for myself, as we all do, but as a collective Board, I'm really not interested in presenting a sole finalist. Like, that is not on the table for me. I'm not interested in that at all. I don't feel like the community that I deal with on a day-to-day basis is interested in that at all. I, to speak to what Trustee Lugo said, I was part of two of those groups, East Austin Coalition of Quality Education and Educators in Solidarity. I was there, I created those questions, and that was great. You still can't put a name with a face, right? When I say open, I guess to Gary's point, hybrid is what I've always meant. I never meant open from the very beginning. I mean, when the Board as a collective have decided on, we've got to pick from this group of people, okay, this group of people needs to meet our public, meet key stakeholders, meet people, right? I understand what we're saying about, you know, lowering the pool. Again, I'm not, I get that there's quality and quantity, and I'm looking for a change-maker. I'm looking for someone to come into our district to do something different, something bigger, bolder, because we have those challenges, right? I'm looking for someone who is ready to roll up their sleeves and be about the business of getting Austin ICB where it needs to be. I get that there's, you know, careers to protect and that sort of thing, so maybe that's not the individual that I have in my mind that I'm looking for, right? And then finally, having so few people, again, having been part of those groups that got to meet with Dr. Ellis all day and other people and meeting with other superintendents, and there was actually one that never made it to the table that we actually met with. So.
He made after she was hired.
You met with her before she was there?
No, like right when she was hired, at the beginning, at the beginning. No, we didn't know, if it was in Florida, that would have been the case. No. But what I'm saying is, I think our community is craving to be part, like that's just, they're just made up that way. And I think the hybrid is really the way we're going to get that. And Robert mentioned, you know, we invite five of these people, five of these people, I don't think that's going to do it. I don't, I don't think that's going to do it. And there's no, I'm not worried about phone calls when people stop at me at the HEB and talking to me, because I want them to know, because they're going to have to live with this person for the next X. Our community did not get that opportunity, and we're still feeling the ripples from that. So as much, right up to the line, right, as much as we can, that's what I'm thinking about and wanting, and that's what I hear our community saying they want. So when I say open, what I've always meant, I guess is what you guys are calling hybrid.
So what you're talking, just to clarify, I think what I heard GR say is we would have a pre-selected, like screened five people from the community.
Yeah, so I don't know that.
Okay. So there's two levels of hybrid.
Yeah, so there's two levels of hybrid.
There's like a, you know, more conservative.
I'm like, whosoever will.
Okay. So your, so what your version of hybrid is more, a little bit more in the open?
Yes.
Where we're saying, these are our top three or four finalists.
If you want to meet them, come on down.
Okay. I was just trying to make that distinction.
I appreciate it.
So as we go around, please share your thoughts on those two levels of hybrid as well. So, Trustee Coffin.
Thank you. And I would just echo what all three of my colleagues have just said, I agree with those comments fortuitously. I feel like we are in a unique moment here where we have committed to an open search in our candidacy for this position, and I think that we cannot back away from having an open search. But I agree that the definition of open search is that it's not that every candidate who applies is outed at the beginning, that we narrow down, but I think it is imperative that the community is able to know who the candidates are and provide their input, if they have any, rather than a select group. I think that recognizing the context of AIS right now too, knowing that we have just had a superintendent and an interim superintendent leave early in their contracts and very unexpectedly, like I don't want to do that to another district. I don't want another district to suffer what we suffered, which is to have somebody leave surprisingly and, you know. And so I am hopeful that we will find candidates who feel that they have the trust and have developed the trust in their community to know that they can say, I've done good work here, I've stayed a long time working for you, and I need to grow my career, or I need to move my family to a cooler city. We want to come to Austin, right? And that they will have the trust and relations with their board, that they can have that conversation. But if they don't have that trusting relationship with their board, where the board would say, well, then you can just leave now, then I don't know the best candidate we would want to have. So I feel like at this moment, it is much more important that we have an open, like to have the finalists be vetted by the community than it is to have a bigger pool of people. I also think that what we're looking for is someone who's very collaborative, and we need someone who's going to know who's going to come in and work with Austin ISD, not replace Austin ISD, not to bring a different district to become Austin ISD, but who is willing to, and in order to do that, to be able to come in and know this community and work with this community, they have to meet this community, and the community needs to meet them. And so having the finalists be publicly known would give them the opportunity to meet their senior staff, would give them an opportunity to visit some schools and see people, it would give them an opportunity to know a little bit more about the district. And that's also who I would be looking for, someone who would want to know that before they come here. Because if you're planning to come here and replace everyone in Austin with your people, that's not who we want. We want somebody who can come here knowing who our people are and is going to work with us. So I think those two are important. I will leave it at that.
Thank you, trustee Kaufman. Trustee Boswell.
I mean, I really don't know if there's so much for me to add on top of what these three have just said. I mean, I kind of laid out how I felt about things whenever we talked about the initial selection of GR. In terms of the level of hybridness that we want to see, I'd like to maybe merge the two ideas of a set of questions that are developed, that are community-driven ahead of time, that are predetermined, that are the ones that the candidates would answer in front of a community that would be, you know, whoever wanted to see them answer those questions, so that there are some guardrails, you know? They're not just taking questions randomly for all the, you know, dream wise. You want somebody who feels comfortable doing that. But I also think that there's a lot of other room for openness in how we develop the profile itself. I'd be interested to tapping into organizations of students that already exist in our district, like the Equity Council, sort of like, you know, National Honor Societies, but also groups like communities and schools, so we can access kids that really are in desperate need of better service from our district. So, yeah, I don't know if we want to get into all that, but I definitely fall on the side of, like Candace said, more hybrid selection processes.
Thank you. All right, trustee Sepata.
So I tune in agreement, especially what trustee Kaufman was saying about the candidate having that relationship with their board, because we are trying, and our interim superintendents are doing a great job in being transparent. So we want them to understand the transparency that we expect, and that's a culture we're trying to create. And so I think they should be able to let their district know that they're, I like the openness process. One thing that I was thinking, a way that we engage community, when Central Health was looking for a CEO, they, after they identified the two candidates, they had a community, community needed for us to come and meet the candidates, and the community could ask questions at that event. And so it was an opportunity for the community to have a meaningful candidate in an absence that we ever, you know, we think of, would be the best candidate. So that's another way to bring in a bigger community to come to AIS, just basically to come and ask questions and tell us, to know who we're thinking about. So, and also, I just wanted to be real about, you know, we had this situation with the previous superintendent where the board was not able to come to a conclusion of any candidate. And so if that happens, then what, you know? So the community knows that we're doing the best we can, and then if we are stuck and there isn't any agreement with us as a collective for any candidate, then, you know, it's going to be on the us and the community to understand that, you know, what's going to be the plan.
Thank you. trustee Whitely.
Yeah, I have a question. So I want to know, what is like, so in Texas, we don't have to do a closed superintendent process. And even if it's encouraged by organizations in Texas, we don't have to do that. But in some states, there's, it's my understanding it's actually required to have an open superintendent process? Do y'all have experience with any of those states? And, because I mean, can you all explain how that works in an example state?
Did you hear the question?
I can answer that. One of the states that does that is Florida, and I've worked in Florida a lot, and you don't really get any sitting superintendents that will go through that process. And don't get me wrong, is that, you know, we'll do whatever you want, but one of the things you, you know, as a search firm, we have to tell you the, you know, the pros and cons. And in the state of Florida, I've done it almost every county, and it's rare that you can get a sitting superintendent that will apply, you know, they have a tremendous amount of turnover, because I don't think they get the very best candidates to attract. So I think you have to kind of look at it as a situation that, if you're boss or if you want to go apply for a job, and then you don't get it, and it gets out there that you are, then you're affected in this. That's what superintendents are concerned about. They're not as effective as they once were, because people have a difference of opinion, say, as if you don't want to be there anymore, and they don't, they're not committed. So that's the concern of a candidate. And I understand from your point of view, you certainly want somebody that wants to come there, be very open and so forth. It's not as if they don't want to be. It's just that you just have to understand what the pool is going to look like. And we'd be less than us if we told you differently. But we'll work whatever you want, how you want to do it. I mean, I think that's some type of hybrid you might want to take a look at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally understand. I think I, I am certainly leaning towards the more open side. And I appreciate y'all giving the work you're doing, that you'll do what we, what we want as a board and as a community. You know, a lot of the reasons I'm hearing when I'm weighing the options, and that when I've thought about this for months before, for taking this office, is a lot of the reasons are protecting a really high-powered adult job. And when I think about who I want to protect and the interests I want to protect, and who I was elected to protect, and thinking about the, those are our kiddos. And so that's, you know, when I think about the reasons and where I fall, that is why I fall on the more open side.
Thank you. Finally, trustee Boswell.
So absolutely, I'm interested in the hybrid and interested in, I appreciate your information about what's on the menu, based on what you've seen and done in the past. Really appreciate the question about the questions that were asked and not answered during the last superintendent hire. That seemed like a very easy ask, honestly, to me. I mean, that is like toe in the water with transparency, not blowing everything completely wide open. And I really want to challenge us to think creatively about what's not on the menu yet that our community might add to this process. And I'll think of, you know, I mean, I love the idea of questions, I love the idea of, you know, I'm not sure where I am on the slider between five people and everybody. I could be persuaded for everybody, but also a whole lot more than five. And I think about, for example, one of my children's schools, for every new teacher in the summer, near, you know, after they were hired, before school started, they spent a day, they got a school bus, and they drove around the whole attendance zone with every new teacher and explained the diversity of communities, what, and it was a magnet school, so they went to every corner of our district and said, this is where your kids come from. They come from all these places. And they started with breakfast in one place, with a panel of parents who they talked to. They drove through the district on a school bus together, and ended with lunch with a panel of students and talked with the students. So I think there's a lot of creativity that's possible on our menu to, you know, not just, hey, come talk to this person here, but hey, we're going to take you into our community. And meeting with some of the community partners we work with, you know, opening it up to our staff, making sure we're talking to families. And I'm not sure that's everyone under the sun. I don't, I'm, the one thing that gives me pause is hearing the statement that the people who are being successful in their districts are less likely to apply, that people who have a district to run away from are more likely to apply with the openness, and that I do have some concern about. So I also, as we're engaging, you know, we're, I hope, going to do a really robust community engagement. I would love to hear from our community about this, really invite them, in the same way that when we have hard budget conversations, I think part of it is, here are your trades, how do you feel? What would you prioritize? To make that part of our engagement, here are our trades, what would you prioritize? How do you feel about that? You know, and I feel absolutely hybrid, again, somewhere on that slider, but maybe not wide open. And I want to bring all the creativity we can bring to how we make it a really meaningful process, not only for the community, but for the candidate. And how we make sure there's someone who has time to spend with us, getting to know us as well, and us that beyond what you can see.
I want to look back to trustee Lugo and Foster, because I wanted to kind of get your take on how open you would want this. You know, I'm calling it like the really open hybrid B and like the less open hybrid, like hybrid A. So, but whatever you want to call it, that's how I have it in my notes. But would you all feel more comfortable, like with the finalists being introduced to the whole community, or just to a selected group of like, you know, five, 10 people? Gosh. I hate to give the answer, it depends. But for me, it does, it does depend in that, you know, I still haven't, we still have an opportunity here to hear from the community, right? We still have an opportunity to create really creative ways to have the interview process or the whittling down process be collaborative and transparent. And I think for me, that's what stands out. It's not open as in, all right, ladies and gentlemen, these are your 20 applicants. It's really the transparency, the authenticity, like that for me, as a non-board member, when I was a community member, when I was a parent, that's what I wanted. I wanted to know, like, how did you get 75 applications? Who's applying? You know, like I genuinely wanted to know that. I wanted to know what part of the country were they from? And I think our community deserves those answers. So now, you know, how open do we have to let, you know? I think it depends. I think it depends on what we hear from our community. I think it depends on, you know, some really, some very real factors. I was mentioning to someone earlier, you know, do I think that, you know, candidates going in, potential candidates going into a search, like that would be completely open? Might they be deterred? So if I were, who knows, right? But a person in a superintendent position who's doing well, my hope would be that they have the trust of their board. If they were to indicate, you know, hey, I'm looking to Austin, you know, here's what's going on, blah, blah, blah. I don't think the candidate would then be lost to us because the board tells them, well, then fine, go and leave us. It's hard to find superintendents, that's why we're all here tonight. I think it could potentially be the opposite, right? Where you get wooed by the board and they're like, no, please don't leave us. So I think there are real factors like that, but I still would press that we can be creative. Look at how many of us, how many of us have PhDs? Who all has a PhD? So there are plenty of creative minds here, and with y'all's help as well. We all have, you know, lots of experience. And then gathering the wisdom from the community. So as open as can be, with the main goal being transparency and authentic community engagement. Because I'll say one more thing, and then I'll pass it to trustee Foster. My perception of a prior search was that data points were presented, like, oh, we've had 72 community meetings with over 2,000 people. That's an interesting piece of information to share with the community for some, for people who live in the capital of Texas. I think we all kind of understand, you know, numbers can be used lots of different ways, right? So transparency, authentic communication with the community, and like, let's find out how creative can we be, how innovative can we be, so that it can be as open as possible without, as open as possible while mitigating potential limitations, right? So.
trustee Foster.
I want the strongest pool possible, as do we all. I don't think a person is going to be successful here unless community engagement is in their bones. You know, that it's not, oh, I'm going to kind of morph and adjust to Austin. It kind of has to be part of who you are. So that, you know, I think where I am is I like this notion of being creative about it, because I am also more than sympathetic to the notion, you have to attend, if you want to be realistic, you have to attend to the culture that's been created. And so if there is a culture in Texas that says, look, when a superintendent does this, this is how a board reacts. And if we know time and again that the kind of standard reaction that people have come to accept, expect, is that hearing about the superintendent doing this is an exit ticket, then that would be something to attend to. I don't have, not just no depth of experience, I have no experience in the actual, on-the-ground reality, board-to-board in over 1,000 school districts, to really know what the what is. I just know, I know enough about our community to know the community engagement is important, to trustee Lugo's point. It has to be thorough, it has to be thoughtful. If we land towards, I don't want to call it closed open, whatever, if we land at less than fully open, we need to own it, we need to explain it, we need to talk about the why, and then just live into that. Wherever we land, this is a thoughtful group, I'll roll it. Yeah.
Can I add one thought? I hear, you know, I trust that a board who values their superintendent Um, I hear, you know, I, I trust that a board who values their superintendent and understands that, you know, if you're in a district smaller than Austin, your career, you know, or if you're a deputy, whatever, you may very well want to move somewhere else, right? That that's part of someone's trajectory and, and like you said, the coolest city, gotta go to a better city. Um, it's not just a, if we are fully open, it's not just a board who knows, it's an entire community who knows. Because we have education reporters who are going to talk about it. And if we had a superintendent who was looking for a job in another place and that was publicly known, it would be all over our media and our community would have ideas about it too, without the same kind of relationship and context that a board had. And I want to be sure we're thinking about that because it's not just board to candidate from the place a person's coming, it's candidate to entire community once we, once that's known.
I, I did find it very interesting, the comment about Florida and the experience that, so it sounds like the culture there has, you not have superintendents going to different places. It, it's a succession model where having the full openness has created an alternative system where it's not superintendent switching jobs, it's people going up, for better or worse. I don't know anything about Florida.
And I could add to the Florida aspect is even everyone that applies gets publicized, all the names.
And some of the superintendents in Florida are elected by the community. So they do some really weird stuff.
I'm sorry. What, what's that?
Elected by the community.
Yeah. So this is, I love the con, this conversation. I mean, you guys are so thoughtful in your responses. Um, I don't have a, a super strong opinion either way. Um, with, you know, yes to hybrid, is it the totally open hybrid versus the more closed hybrid? I'm probably leaning towards the more closed. Um, but I could, um, and part of it is because I want us to, like, I want us to hire the best superintendent for our community. And like, to me, that is the most important thing. So that's like one factor. Um, and somebody that could threaten that, I, that does make me worry a little bit, but not, you know, it's, it's not a deal breaker for me by any means. Um, the other thing I think about is who this board is. This is a board that knows our community. I feel like y'all and we all truly represent every facet of our community. We have several people on this board who worked in AISD as recently as a few months ago. This was not the case last time we went through this search. So not, and sorry y'all, I was part of that. So, you know, take everything I say with a grain of salt perhaps, but I mean, we, um, this isn't just a different board and I think we're going to make a different kind of decision whether or not the community is completely, um, aware of who our finalists are or just because you know what the community wants. You're much more in tune. And I think who you would select is not going to be far off from who the people you represent and select. So that's the other thing to think about. So I'm kind of like, well, if that's the case, do we want to then risk having a weaker pool of applicants if we're going to have a similar outcome? Maybe there are other ways we can build trust in the community through the questionnaire. Um, maybe we can have 15 people, you know, sign non-disclosure agreements. I mean, we do have a tradition of having community engaged, involved in our interview for principals, for top level officials in our district. And as far as I know, there haven't been leaks. I mean, Lynn, I know you've been involved in some of those as a community member.
Yes.
And so I want to assure like anybody who's, you know, thinking about applying to this district as the superintendent, even if it's some form of hybrid, if we select the people who are going to serve on, you know, as the, the vetted community members, they're going to be good people. They're not going to leak. These are, like, they want success as well in this search. And, um, and so anyway, all that is to say is I'm leaning towards like a limited openness in this hybrid. Um, but I, I could be convinced to go fully open with the, with the top, maybe two or three finalists, but that's where I am.
I, I actually have a question about the, the, the five, the six, the 15 in terms of, well, the answer would be that our chief equity officer would have to be deeply engaged in the process to determine like who this would be. But to be careful, um, why then whoever they are? And, and yes, true, whoever they are going to be, they're going to be smart, but why then? There's a million people here and there's thousands who are deeply engaged. And so the extension of the conversation to six more or to 15 more on the basis of a, a set of criteria we determined over the course of a couple of weeks, where an election cycle is going all in to go into a four-year term. And if you have a set of responsibilities to come with that, I, I, and, and I, I don't like to be thinking off the dome like this. I like to be a little more thoughtful, especially when, because I don't want to be offensive. And, you know, these, these are completely public meetings as they should be, but, um, we're in a territory where I would want to be very, very thoughtful, um, in terms of a hybrid thing that brings in a, an anointed view or expands to an anointed view. And I hope that, I don't mean offense to any of our amazing community members, but I see that as naturally exclusive out, out the gate by criteria that we would set. Yeah, that's scary.
Yes, trustee Adam.
Um, I'm moving my slider. Um, I've been writing down some things that other trustees have said and been, um, including, and I generally would have been in that anointed view, so I agree with you. I feel like, um, having been one of those people who would have probably been, you know, invited into this group if I were not sitting in this seat, um, I, I can't get behind, I will get behind it, but I really right now can't get behind it. If that's the role of the board, then I, I want it to be whoever we can get, right? Uh, at the beginning I said, who's whoever will. Trustee Gonzalez really like, I wrote some things down that he was saying that I could live with, whereas we, we do have those questions, right? They're not off the cuff questions. There's questions that have come in and they're questions we're going to ask authentically, not misogynistic, you know, just as they were asked, right? I totally accept that. A town hall, right? I, I, you know, again, I, we're all there, we're all listening, we're all seeing, maybe not all being actively participating. So I've moved my slider from all closer to the mid mark as far as openness. So not five, right? Um, and definitely, I like the anointed view, but definitely more than less. So whatever we kind of get to, know there would be more than less, but I'm not, I'm not dying on the heel of all. I mean, I would love for that to happen, but I understand that there's, there's other, like, you know, there's other things involved. We have a time, you know, with timeline also, but those are some things that, that I have been listening to, um, just some words. I love the context, not board, just board to candidate, but candidate to community. Collaborative, creative, transparent, authentic. I think that just, that's Austin right there. That is Austin. And if we can get there, I'm not going to get stuck on a number if we can get there.
Anyone else want to comment?
So I, I'm worried about any process that we require confidentiality agreements outside of this group, just because I think when we really think about, one thing I've been learning about true representation is that you have to go out and you have to go deep in the community because the usual suspects aren't necessarily representative of all. And when you go deep in the community, you might find that there are ways of acting and there are values that are different from candidate. And that part of the challenge of, of equity is recognizing that sometimes the formal structures are barriers to participation for people. And so when you have a formal structure that you have to sign this people's favor, promising not to divulge anything from this thing, that is going to create a barrier for some people to not want to participate in the process. But I just want to be kind of wary of that we have to, of having to pick good people who we would trust to honor that confidentiality would potentially exclude some people, not because they're not good people, but because that value of what confidentiality means is different, right? Like, you know, can you tell your wife? Can you tell your, in my family, like confidential means that, you know, as long as they're within three degrees of cousinhood, like. So, you know, so I just want to be wary of anything where we have to keep secrets because part of what, what I promised as a candidate was that we would be open. And keeping secrets is not open, even if you expand the group a little bit. So that's my concern on that. Um, I would just also, this is not a criticism, but I would just say, um, this is, um, when we think of how we'll enroll district staff with this, just a recognition that any department that we involve in helping us with this search may have candidates or potential candidates within that department. So this is one where I'm trying to make sure I understand our role, that this is our baby, like we as a board have to run the show and with, that's why we hire a search firm. And just to be careful as we're thinking about, well, we need communications, we need an equity office, we need, you know, people to communicate with the schools, that any one of those people that we're working with may want to be candidates, which is a recognition that we have to figure out some ways to do this that may not be fully staffed.
I think one thing to think about too, as we're, as we're entering this, and I kind of saw this, you know, when we went through the last search and any of y'all who have hired in your, in your, you know, careers, there's a tendency to hire somebody who kind of fixes the mistakes of the immediate predecessor, which is natural to do that, but then you still have to think about, well, what about all the other stuff, right? Like, we want somebody who's going to be here for at least like, I'm guessing like five years, right? And so what's important to us right now in this moment might not be the thing that's super important to us like three or four years from now. So like, I kind of go back to our scorecard, sorry y'all, I'm getting nerdy, but like going back to our scorecard and our values. That's why I said earlier, I want to find the best person for this job. Like right now, we're hurting because of some of the, you know, transitions we've had and the broken systems. We have a good person right now to kind of get us on track for those. Maybe, so, so I, that's, I'll just, that's all I'll say on that, but you, you get what I'm saying. Think about just beyond this year.
Well, I think part of the way we can communicate with our community about that and part of the way I'm thinking about it is, um, we don't want to hire in a reactive way and kind of what are foundational characteristics? What do we always need? And what are situational characteristics? What do we need in this moment? And so making sure that we're really thinking cleanly about kind of that must have foundation in a person that we need. Um, and I think we have a pretty solid shared set of values about that in a lot of ways and a lot that will emerge, um, and thinking cleanly about that.
trustee Whitley too, I can send your.
I like, I'm, you know, reading articles about previous superintendent searches and so our, you know, when I came to Austin as a UT undergrad, our superintendent in, of Austin ISD had been here since I was a seventh grader in Houston. And that was done through an open process. Um, then the next superintendent who I worked under, um, it was a very close process, so, which really excited people, which excited the media where they're waiting at the airport with cameras. So the person got outed anyway, um, who became superintendent. They said, oh, well, it's a closed process, but yeah, so, so she, she was outed as, as a candidate, because our, I mean, our, our community and our reporters around here, they're smart and they're in age, okay? Um, so, you know, that's when we, when they are, that's one way people can help us too is, um, when, if we have a number of finalists who are public, they're going to, the community is going to dig into it. More importantly, journalists are going to dig into them to help us not make big mistakes. Um, because, you know, they can do better than my Google searches. Yeah.
Any comments on the side of the table? trustee Simba, Gonzalez. One more thing that, I mean, you probably have heard me say a lot of times is, you know, who we hire is super important, but how we manage that person and work with that person is probably even more important in some ways. And so a lot of the transparency that this board values is, you know, is something that we will carry on even beyond the search process. So just, you know, think about that too and think about how, um, like I know what I think about, I'm going to tell you all to think about, what I reflect on is, would we be where we are right now in the district had our board leaned into our community more higher, you know? Not, not to like diminish the commitment or anything of the board we had. I know we were all very committed to doing the best we could, but you know, hindsight is 2020, you're like, okay, well, let's remember that as we go forward. Uh, as superintendent, how do we lean in our community as we manage and work with our superintendent?
And I would like to offer, you know, how we manage and work with our superintendent and how we support our superintendent to get to know our community, to be a resource, to be partners as a, excuse me.
Yes, we got it.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure if we're ready to make a total decision tonight. Are we, I mean, do we feel like we're in a place where we could make a decision exactly on the end of the research?
I appreciate Lynn's comment of hearing as part of the input process a little bit more. So I feel like we could lean in one direction, but we would open for a couple of weeks of the input from the.
Okay. How, can you just give me a thumbs up? Did y'all feel like we need to kind of bawl this over a little bit more?
My question is if we do what David said, how does that affect the timeline that GR does lay out to us?
Well, it, it, it's obviously, excuse me, this is Gary Wirth. Um, it will affect the, you know, the timeline. I was listening now as you were going around and, and I, I think, just throwing this out that you might want to consider on the, one of the thoughts on the hybrid is, is maybe expanding that a little bit more where, um, uh, we've had some success of where we could meet with a larger group and have that meet the candidates and, and, and put together some questions, um, you know, that way. I, I think what you have to be a little bit careful is that if you get too far out there with the, uh, with various groups and then you get a little too public and you don't choose, you, you don't choose one side wants this person or another side wants that person. And then what you've done is, is had a, a process that you thought was going to be inclusive and what has happened is you've divided the community even more about the candidate because one side or the other didn't get who they wanted. Uh, we've been down that road before and I see Gloria shaking her head, yes. You know, so you, you, you have to be a little bit careful how much that you delegate out there, uh, your, uh, your responsibility to hiring. But if you took a hybrid step four or five, if you wanted to expand that, you know, we certainly, you know, we can make that work. Uh, we could even make, uh, you know, some, some of the members put their questions together and, and we could moderate that, you know, uh, the search firm can. Or you could just bring in more people that'll sit in and give your, give their impression, um, you know? And one of the reasons why Gloria's mentioned not, not hire or tell you who to hire, because if you do that, then you don't hire what, who they want, some people are going to be if you do that, then you don't hire what, who they want, some people are going to be unhappy. So I just, that's why we always use an impression regarding the candidates and, and not make a recommendation from those community groups, because the last thing we want to do is go through this entire process and then have people unhappy that they felt like they didn't go, get who they wanted. So we don't want to do this to set it up for failure.
Gary, the question is, what would be the drop dead date for the board to make a decision on what you'd like the process to look like? Because once we get a timeline, and once we start hearing from your constituents, then, you know, we'll notify our 50 associates to let people know, and then we start the recruiting process. And, and that takes time. So.
Well, yeah, I think how we could do this so that we could move along on our timeline, because I, you know, our timeline is trying to interview the middle toward the end of May, and, and, and that's, that's, I don't want to go really beyond that, because I think even candidates that want to apply for Austin, and sooner or later is going to say that, you know, once you move into June, that they're not, that they're just not going to get interested. But I think what we could do is take a look at, continue the stakeholder part of it, and then when we bring back the results of the stakeholders' meetings, that would be, you know, sometime there in first part of, of March, we could make that, you know, make that determination, because then we're out recruiting. And so we've got to answer the candidates' questions, what kind of process is the search going to be at the end? So we probably could continue to move on, meet with stakeholders, and, and then, and then spend more time with the board after, when we're about ready to get the profile done, because that won't have anything to do with the, the latter part of the process, but we'll have to have a decision by, by, by March, because then we're going to be recruiting. It, it's not that we're not going to recruit now, but we can kind of semi-stall people off.
Yeah, I was going to add that we, just in the draft of the timeline, that meeting, it looks like it's right now scheduled for, like, the 21st of March, so somewhere between now and then, as Gary said, because once the applications go out and the process, the advertisement process starts and the recruitment officially starts, people are going to ask. And, and I know all three of us were at the American Association of School Administrators Conference this past week, and we were talking to people about Austin. I know I was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so, and I know Gary and Robert were as well. And, and the question did come up, well, you know, what type of search and, and how are they, and we just said, well, we're still in the discussion phase of that. But a lot of superintendents would want to know, and, and I think, as one of your board members just said, it's not even just the superintendents and their responsibility and accountability to the board, they have a responsibility and accountability to the community. And they're very, you know, ex-superintendents are very careful, first, they don't want to apply for multiple jobs, so they're going to be very particular about who, which districts they applied for, but their community is going to find out. And, you know, that, that's a slippery slope for them as well, to not give the impression to their communities. I mean, just think of yourselves, if you had a superintendent who maybe went after maybe one or two jobs during the course of the year, I mean, that gets a little, have you have, that has you to get a little anxious. And so we have to think about all aspects of that, the, the board itself, but the community at large, and the staff. The staffs begin to get nervous that they have a superintendent who is possibly leaving. It, it just causes, and I'm speaking not only from talking to people, but from personal experience. So you really have to just kind of take that in phases and do very good due diligence to make people feel okay about it. I'm saying all that to say, the superintendent candidates, you have, you have to do a lot of communication in, within your district to make people feel, it's all right for me to apply to Austin. I, I, I'm not saying I don't want to be here, I'm not saying I don't want to like where I am, but I, I, I just want to further my career and, and make people feel okay about it. So I just want to kind of explain, it's a dual dynamic there as well.
Now, it, it works sometimes saying that, and other times, you know, they're moving down the road. They're moving down the road because they're lucky, but a lot of the people we're getting, with that we will get, will be folks that we will be reaching out and trying to recruit. So it won't be, you're, you're, you're really outstanding candidates, need a little nudge, they're not just looking for a job.
Okay, would the 21st, that gives you a month to decide how you want this?
For sure.
Yeah. Okay? So the 21st?
That would be hilarious.
Yeah, hilarious.
And if, and if, you know, before that time, we can, we can start, you really can't start the recruiting, but we have to answer questions until we know what the profile is. And once we know what the profile is, then the advertisement and all that goes out. But we're being asked questions, and we were at AASAM, that's what Gary was talking about, and we're asking, so you've got Austin, tell me about it.
So I think, yeah, I mean, I like the idea, is the board okay with, like, sleeping on this, doing some outreach? Talk, I would say, talk to your people in your communities, right? I mean, like, because I think it's, they're going to be just grateful that, I mean, I think a lot of people are going to be so grateful that we're even asking them. Like, that's how you build trust, right? It is, you know, we're not trying to force anything down anyone's throat, we're, like, I think we are sincerely trying to represent a process that represents the values of our community. But I guess one thing I wanted to ask is, if we're doing the outreach over the, you know, we have it listed here on the timeline, you know, in March, could you, could GR include that as part of their questions, too? So like, you're talking, you're asking about the profile, but you're also asking folks, how open would you feel the search, the search could be? And we kind of give, like, a couple of options, so they know what we're, what we mean. And if everyone's like, no, we totally trust this board, like, we don't need it, then it's like, okay, there's our answer. But then, you know, like, possibly, like, that, that gives us a different pathway, but if they're like, okay.
Wonderful thought.
That's right, so.
But I would love to invite our community into this thought process and this conversation, and hear what people have to say.
That's right.
And also, just a recognition that, that it's not just about trusting the board to make the best decision, but a belief system that said the best decisions come out of engagement.
So, right now, this is open, the community is listening right now. Right, yeah. I mean, it's recorded, I don't think it's, it's not televised, correct? It's not televised, but if somebody were to ask for this recording.
We'd make it available, too.
We'd make it, because we have.
Can we not post it on the superintendent?
We could, yes.
We should.
Let, let, let's shout.
I like that. Yeah. Okay, could I do? Anyone else?
I would love to specially post, can we excerpt from our board meeting when we had GR come talk to us, and also add that to that page?
Oh, that's so sweet.
Thank you.
To the point of not everybody being happy, that's called Monday in this job, that's called every day in this job. I think that what's important, again, the final decision, Elijah does, we stood up, raised our hands, said we take that weight, and so that's, that's our job. But a big part of that job is being collaborative and talking with groups of people. And I'll just, as a simple example, when we made our choice for interim, I would go with emails, you know, but now those same people are sending me different emails. And so for a superintendent that comes in, whatever, however that falls in our community, that person, that's that engagement, right? That's like getting into the community and working with the community and getting to know who Austin is, because we love hard, right? We love hard, and so we expect when you come in to do everything all at once, and then we give you grace, right? That's just kind of the way this community works. It's, this is different, I don't even know. I've lived in some small towns in West Texas, and I've lived in Austin, and the school district here is really a microcosm of the city, whereas, you know, it's just, I don't even know how to describe it, it's Austin, right? And so when you're talking with people, one thing that, you know, that I think about is when they say, you know, well, you've got Austin or whatever, we know that at some point, this is going to be open, right? On the slider, we don't know where yet, but we know that it will be open, right? So I feel good in telling people, when I meet them on the street, it's like, yeah, we're going to do an open search. What level? I don't know, yeah, we're, we're still trying to find the best thing for the community and the best thing for the candidate, making, meeting that halfway point. So, I mean, you tell people what your professionalism tells, you have to tell them, but what we do know is it's not closed. That's what we do know. It is not going to be a closed search, does not happen. And I would say that definitively, I was like, our community won't allow it.
So I have a question for GR is, so if you all are going to be asking questions to, during your outreach on how open folks want, you know, want this search to be, should we also be doing that type of outreach with our own constituents? Like, we're in the community all the time. What are y'all's thoughts? What are, so I'm just curious to hear from GR and kind of what your.
You know, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that. You know, the, the questions that we ask you are the same questions we're asking the And so if you can take those, because we're going to ask, some of the ones that you will talk to will not attend some of these town hall meetings. And so I think it's important that you do ask those questions, and obviously, what we'd like for you to do is to point them to the survey, which comes in multiple languages, and that's how you're going to get their input, too. And it's going to be posted on your website, it's going to be posted on, on, you, the media will get that out to the community, which is important to do as well.
So I have a timeline question. If we're looking at March 7th, 8th, and 9th, for input opportu, in-person input opportunities, and then we're looking at spring break, and then we're looking at being immediately back from spring break on the 21st, that does not give us much opportunity for additional input opportunities. I've had schools tell me they would love for us to come to a staff meeting, I've had departments here say they would love for us to come to departmental meetings. We haven't really established how we're going to engage fully, you know, what that spectrum of options is. And I understand the urgency of getting moving, and I understand what we lose when we're too urgent. I wonder if one more week after spring break might get a better profile for us and more opportunities to be out in community, talking with people.
That's way too long.
And I'm moving either, you know, possibly moving that 21st, even if we moved it to that Saturday, and bought ourselves some time that week, if that might benefit us to get better input from people. There's three days in advance.
When is spring, Gary?
It's the 11th through the 19th.
Okay.
And I have real concerns, I think for surveys purposes, for all kinds of things, people aren't paying attention. And I have real concerns.
Well, we could go, we could go the Saturday before that, but again, you know, we, well, a lot of times, you know, we, we'll do two days, maybe three days, and if we're doing three days back-to-back, and we do a lot of advertising ahead and let people know, know that, and when the meetings are going to be, and I, and I, I'm not opposed to doing the Saturday, you know, the Saturday before, I, I'm not, I don't know how many people we would get, but, you know, that would give a, another period of time. But if we keep moving it back, and we have to process all the input data we get, then we're going to end up probably interviewing in the middle of June.
So if we moved our meeting on the 21st to the 25th, you don't think that would be a fair trade?
Say that, I, I'm sorry, you can hear.
I was thinking about moving our meeting on the 21st to the 25th, to that Saturday, and giving us a few more days in there to get some feedback.
That's what I was trying to, Gary, she's not talking about the stakeholder meetings themselves, just the meeting on the 21st.
Well, I'm talking about opportunities for stakeholder meetings early that week.
For us to have them.
Yeah, she's, she's talking about more stakeholders.
Okay.
Three days doesn't seem like a lot.
And that's going to eat up, you know, more time. I mean, I mean, I, I mean, I'd rather try to do it a little, little earlier than, than later, because it's, it's, it's just going to, I mean, I'm just trying to give you the reality of it, is that.
If you do earlier, can you get the same amount of people? Or these, these sound like meetings.
But if we moved stakeholder meetings to the, the week before that, like Gary is saying.
But that would help. I, I mean, that's next week.
Well, that's true.
So I think that would help. I mean, I just, I worry, I worry about where that balances with spring break falling right when it does, that we're going to miss out on really authentic engagement, that it's, it's going to feel more like checkbox engagement, that doesn't get us the chance to really.
Yeah, I would say if, if spring break is the 11th, and we're going all the way up to the 9th, that might be something to think about, because we've run into that before.
Let's just kind of move it, you know, continue to move it out, because we're, right now, in all honesty, we're, we're in the middle of May, and I try to tighten this up as, as, as much as we can, because the recruitment side of it, we, we, we're only looking at about a month, actually, a little bit less than a month.
Okay, so spring break is the week of, the whole week of the 12.
I have a question. Go ahead. So I have a question. So the stakeholder engagement for, that's scheduled for the 7th, 8th, and 9th, do y'all have, like, preliminary plans or ideas of how those meetings would be? Like, is it Zoom and in-person? Is it a mix of both? Is it primarily targeting community members and families?
Well, it's actually both, and what we would do is have a team, it would be obviously Robert and Gloria and, and maybe myself, and it depends on what the schedule was, but last time we did it, we had great, great results, is that what we worked with the staff people, of course, they know the stakeholder groups, and, you know, rather than, than us, and we just more or less showed up, but we worked, we worked with them on a schedule where we had meetings all day from the morning, and we had them in different places around the, around the district. So we actually went out in various areas of the, of the district, and we had someone drive us from place to place, so there was, you know, there wasn't any one getting lost. And so we put together a rather aggressive schedule, where we had some meetings were more, maybe two or three people, and we had other meetings that we had more, more folks involved. And then we had open forums, and, and we had two to three open forums per, per evening going on. So a lot can get done in a, in a three-day period. Then when you put Saturday in there, if we add another day, Saturday, that, that's how it's done. So we kind of worked with the staff, and, and, and we, we could put that together with the staff, and we could run that by you folks to see if we've got everything covered.
Yeah.
You're also competing against South Bay.
Yeah.
You're, you're competing against South Bay on the 7th, the 8th, it's South Bay EDU, sorry, South Bay EDU. But I'm, just need some clarification, because maybe I, I've missed a step, I think. The 7th, the 8th, and the 9th, you're holding meetings all over the district simultaneously, is that what's happening?
Yes.
Okay, my concern is, we're still asking people to come to us in these three meetings. Where are we going to? Oh, we're not? Okay, good, I missed it.
No, we're going out to those areas, you know, and we will be assigning, we've had a schedule where we're going to be throughout the district. where we're gonna be throughout the district in, in different places at different times.
And, and those, that schedule will have been publicized, and that's why, going back to the spring break comment, that, that schedule would have been publicized ahead of time, so people know where and when.
So, it's gonna be publicized next week?
That's why it looks like it's...
Tomorrow?
Yeah, if we try to do it the week before, that might be tight, looking at where we are today.
I'm just, I wanna be really concerned about our people, our community members. I wanna give them time, you know, we have people who have kids in an entire vertical team, right? They have like a pre-K, an elementary, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. And I would just love for them to have like multiple opportunities. If they miss one, there's a game this night, or there's a play this night, or there's a science fair this night, or whatever. And I'm just, three days, and maybe once I see it on paper, it just does not seem like a lot. I mean, it just doesn't. And so, I really need to, I guess, see it like, a schedule like as soon as possible.
Yeah, and that was kind of my question, is like, are, are, you know, like preliminary plans or blocks of time? And, you know, as a person who works during the day, like works outside the home during the daytime, at home, whatever it is, right? I, I work for money during the day. I, I don't, I don't get to always go to the things I wanna go to. You know, like, the one, the one thing that happened in 2020 where I was able to engage in some of the meetings is that they were held by Zoom, but the other thing would be, you know, like, I, you know, I don't know, 6 o'clock, give people a buffer, you know, you gotta pick up the kids and then give them a snack so they don't go feral. But then, like, I like the Saturday idea as well, but I, I am worried about, like, now we're in crunch time, you know, you've got South By Southwest, EDU, you know, how do we get the right folks? And then, kind of where I started with my question about, you know, who are we targeting? From what I'm picking up is that it would be, you know, groups or people or whatever it is with the suggestion or with the assistance of the administration to say like, oh, go to this part of town, we've got this facility, or we've got this space reserved. But all of that kind of sounds like more outward-facing, rather than what I was hearing from trustee Boswell, is that like staff wanna be involved too, you know, and they can't during the school day.
Because they're working for money.
But, but we would have something like right after school. What we usually do is schedule for staff with the input of the board, and you would have a real strong, critical piece and a voice in that. But we schedule staff, like, for example, teachers would be right after school, when they would normally meet in the staff meeting, or before school, whatever time. And we would have maybe several of those groups. We would then meet with teacher leader groups, your, your leaders of your various unions or organizations. Your community, I mean, that could also be right after school. So, we, we would then, during the day, would select groups of individuals, again, based on input from you and the administration. What are the best groups to meet during the day? Maybe your, your chamber groups or other groups that meet business leaders during lunch, or something like that. So, we would try to set it so that people can come at times that are convenient for them. We've had early morning meetings where people come in on their way to work, like 7:00, 7:30, and we, and we get a lot of good participation with that, where we meet for an hour, say, where people have the kind of jobs they can go to a little later. So, we structure it so that those, everyone can come. And as we said earlier, we also really try to get into parts of the community where it would be easy for people to get there. Real important, so that you're reaching out to, to those segments of the community that you don't hear from a lot. Maybe in a church, or synagogue, or other places where they normally would go, we would meet there as we arrange it. So, it is gonna take some organization and some, some time, but we, we wanna spread out as much as we can and make it...
Yeah, and we will provide enough, you know, folks to do that. I mean, I kind of envisioned, and I, I don't know, last time I did this, Jacob was part of the, you know, the process. We had drivers that went, you know, all over the place and, and went out to meet the people. But it does take a, a long time to get the schedule, so I always envision working with the, with the staff and having them help put it together, then run that by you folks, and then tweak it, and then, then we can get going on it. And, and we always have the online survey too.
So, I think, you know, some of what I'm hearing from the board is like a concern that three days or four, even if we do a Saturday, that might not be sufficient, given the size and complexity of our community. So, that, that's like one, is that right? I mean, yeah, sort of, maybe, you know. But it sounds like maybe some of that can be addressed by doing Zoom on some of the days in between. So, that's, you know, like, if you were to do a Saturday before, so that would be what, like the...
The 5th?
So, yeah, if we did March 5th, a Saturday session, I'm sorry, the 4th, March 4th. And then, if you guys are doing face-to-face on the 7th, 8th, and 9th, but maybe we do a couple of Zooms, or like before that, on, on like Sunday or Monday, is that, you know, that would hit some other groups of people who maybe can't, you know, we got a lot of people who have time to get in their car, or even have a car, to go somewhere, so maybe Zoom could be preferable.
And it could be possible to do something, I don't know how people would feel about it, you know, at the beginning of spring break as well. Maybe that's easier for our staff. Maybe there are people who could engage that way during the day, who otherwise might not be able to.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know. The burden that creates on other staff, and then I think it's, you know, we would have to have that conversation.
Is there a way for folks who are like, I don't, I don't wanna go to a meeting, but like, I wanna put my two cents in, I, I have an opinion, how's, how can they? So, this is...
And we can shake that.
Okay, that's what's gonna go out next week, actually, this week, or this week?
It's the 23rd. But I know we expressed a real interest in having a say in tweaking the survey.
Okay, so, so it sounds like one of the things that we're hoping to, how, Gary, how many people are, is it just gonna be the three of you that are hitting all these people on those three days?
Well, it, it kind of depends the schedule. Normally, I only have two people in the district, but, you know, because of our conversation, when, you know, we may have three or four people. It kind of depends on, on, you know, the, the amount of organizations and places you want us to go. I mean, we'll certainly adjust our staff to meet, you know, meet the schedule. But I just don't know who we're all meeting with yet, but we, we can staff it.
You can staff it, okay.
And we can also have the Zoom meetings going on at the same time.
Right.
Okay.
We've done that before.
So, yeah, I have a question about when the survey would be ready, because I have four scheduled community meetings. And one is this Saturday, so, I mean, I have, I think, 80 students signed up with their parents. So, it would be good if I could give them the survey to throw out there, you know, and that these other meetings are happening. So, is that something that we could do?
I mean, we, we could get our survey up fairly, fairly quickly. I could work with, you know, your in-house people to do that with our people. But we probably could get our survey up within a few days.
Yeah, I think our board is probably gonna wanna take a look at the survey again. Now at us, they're probably gonna wanna take a look at it. I'm sure it's a good one. But is there a way that we...
But that was part of our conversation.
Yeah, I, I could do it. The, the survey is pretty much research-based, but I could have you, you know, take a look at it. We could tweak it some, but it would be rather costly for us to, to completely redo the thing.
Sure. At least we'll probably wanna include a question about the openness of the search, right? We'd want that in the survey.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The openness. We'd wanna add a question in there about the openness of the search.
And I don't think we're asking about completely redoing it, but I think we would love to see it and, and may have some locally specific questions that we would like to include. And appreciate when we talked during the process about that there was room for that, so thank you for that.
And I don't think we wanna make it more voluminous. We would be, we would be like, maybe swapping out one for that one, or, you know, maybe this is what we wanted, this is what we really wanna know. So, I, I get that, the normal reference, that, that you guys have done that work already, so that's good. But it's not, we, we don't wanna make it longer, and I would like to look at it for the fact that, to see how long it is. I remember the sample that we got on the committee, but that's something that we ask of our community. They're a little survey-averse. They're more like, give me a blank space and I'll tell you what I think, right? And I know you guys said that there was a spot for that.
Yes, there is.
And so, I don't know if you're like having any red stars, because they may skip all those red stars to go down with it. Let me tell you what I think about this option. I mean, that, that very much could happen. Our people need to move, because they're gonna need time. So, I really feel like the 27th, we should be saying this is where we're gonna be.
Jacob, what is capacity for staff right now to help us pull this together?
I'm gonna make the community engagement tomorrow, so that we can talk about some of that interestingly. We need to support our side with logistics and getting the message out. The GR is gonna provide the facilitation and the leading of these groups. So, I should have better information then. Most likely, what we'll do, because I did help in 2014, as I recall, is I came in at that point because we needed a lot of people to get people around and just to make sure the building is open, that the sign was outside so people knew where to go. And so, I think that probably what we'll have is multiple staff members who will just be in charge of one or two events. So, it's not gonna be that I'm gonna ask Ally, Ally, go run all this all by yourself. It's gonna be, let's plan this out, and then I'll go help Robert on what he's doing on Tuesday. And then Ally will go help, you know, Gary on what he's doing on Wednesday.
And what does it look like if we do some of this during spring break for staff, for facilities? What do we need to be considering? Do we need to find other public spaces? What do we plan to be in the park? Like, what do we need to do?
That is one that I'll obviously need to speak to staff when we start talking about custodians and some of our other staff. It, it could be difficult, but I won't know until I actually go and speak with them. But, but I can easily find out what staff are in plan on being here, you know, how can we call for time for staff to make them look for them and see what other plans could potentially work for that script like we. I do think that if we wanna use our sites, they will be available. But if we're wanting to... Just whatever. I think it's gonna be one for each best for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the library. I believe Jacob also sent us a giant list of organizations and groups, so please take a look at that and give us some feedback.
And I am not, I did it for the bond. I'm not opposed to throwing up a table at things where it already happening, right? I, I do not mind doing that. When St. John's had their thing, I was like, yeah, here's the bond stickers, how you doing? Yeah, you're here to talk about resources, I'm here to talk about past the bond. And so, if we can find out what's going on, Jacob, in the community, we can double those times, right? Like, we could double our, our we, those of us who will be here. And this board is used to hustling. I, I feel like this is a hustling board. We show up in those spaces. And so, I think we can magnify our efforts that way.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I feel like you've got four, four meetings coming up.
And there are some people from all over the district.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. And then, I mean, we've got like ACPTA, you know, we've got all sorts of, I mean, the CACs. I figured like we can even just add, Jacob, could we send something out to all the CAC co-chairs with like, like a little, a little video?
I'm gonna be speaking to Austin Neighborhood Council.
Oh, good, yeah. So, yeah. Just a little something, like a script for the CAC folks to read at their meeting about the superintendent search. And maybe if we wanna do like a little video from one of, one of our awesome trustees, who's an amazing public speaker, to sort of humanize it, that might be cool.
We can. I just wanna share, so our CAC set their, their calendar dates out for the entire year, something we would ask them to do before the school year starts. And so, some of them may have already planned to be meeting at the spring break. If we give them enough notice, I'm sure that they'd be able to change it to happen before spring break. But that's something to where I just need to make sure that we do provide enough notice to let them change that date.
Do you have the dates for all of them? Can you share those with us?
My team does have the date for...
Can you send those to us? That would be super helpful to know. Thank you.
All right, so, cool. All right. So, you have the feedback. We'll finalize the dates then for the extended community engagement in the next day or two, once our little committee meets on that.
Then we need to know how much it's gonna cost.
And we'll need to know how much, yeah, that's gonna cost us, because we know it's going above and beyond. And, but I think we're okay with the other dates on here, right?
I think we need to.
I think so too. Okay. Do y'all, GR, do y'all have any questions for us? Do you feel pretty clear on timeline?
Well, I, I think I'm somewhat clear, but it might be a little fluff, but I'll, I'll figure that out.
Okay, you got my number.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, and you, yeah, if you guys, yeah, once we decide, we'll send the trustees a clean timeline.
I was gonna ask, is Jacob working with the communication department as well?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, so when I, when I was referencing my colleague, his name is Ally, she's in charge of our communication division.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, then I think we can move on. So, there's two more quick items, and I hope they're quick. We can, so y'all have an option. We can either talk about this as a whole board, the approval of advertisements and the salary considerations, or we can just talk about that with the committee. Do y'all have a preference? You like the committee? I think one thing that they would wanna hear about is the salary, right? I mean, just a little, Gary, if you wanna just tell us that it's like, yeah, all together, right? Or who, GR, can y'all talk to us a little bit about the salary and how that's calculated and what would be a likely range?
Okay. Yes, the firm's philosophy has been on the salary, it's, it's worked out pretty good. How we advertise the salary, whatever that number is, it's going to be, all the candidates, everybody in the industry wanna know what the base salary is going to be. So, we advertise the base salary will be whatever that number is, plus a comprehensive benefit package. And then we always have the caveat right after that, said the final salary will be negotiated based upon the candidate's experience and median board criteria. That gives us a little wiggle room either way, but they're gonna wanna know what the base salary is. And I, I, I don't use a range, because everybody wants to be atop the range. And you can't say competitive, because a lot of places that we're gonna advertise need to, need to know what the base salary is. And so, I, I looked at your, your, your previous superintendent, not your interim, but your previous superintendent, I believe she was making around $325,000. And our market, that's what was her base. Our market is not what people are currently making, because we're advertising for the position one year out. So, meaning that we're gonna be comparing salaries for, you know, July 23 and through 24. So, we're one year out is what our salary. So we're one year out is what our salary. So what I suggest or what I'm thinking about doing is putting, and I talked this over with the team, is that if we took 325, we put a 3% on it and we take it up right around 335. And my team thought that was okay, but they thought it was a little, Gloria thought it was a little low. But just because of what the market is out there. I know what the council rates these schools are doing. That's it.
Can I clarify that? When you said it was 325 and an additional 10%, wouldn't they take it to 3%? 3%? Okay, I misunderstood. 3%?
I didn't hear that.
Oh, no, I misunderstood the percentage increase. I got to clarify, thank you.
Yeah, it's three, he added, Gary, he just wanted to know if it's 3% rather than 10%.
No, it's, yeah, it's three, well, yeah. And, you know, the thing is, in today's market, you know, if somebody's making 290, 300, you know, it's going to be a little difficult for them to move, you know, for, you know, for a certain range, so it needs to be out there. I know Gloria feels pretty strong about 350, you know, and she's probably right because of some of the other large districts around the country we've done, they've been in that range. But I was kind of using that as a barometer of being able to say, okay, that's 325. We're one out and that would be 3%. But it probably needs to be even a little higher than that because it's really two years.
Where does this, where does that compare to other comparable districts at this time? Other major urban districts in Texas?
Well, the 335 would be on the lower end.
Trustee Gopman, all of those are available on T E's website.
Yeah, it's low. And I mean, it's, and it's, I think, the crazy thing is there are like, there are small districts. There are small districts paying 400,000, which is ridiculous, but those areas are small outlier. But like it's like the highest right now in Texas is like 450,000, right? 12,000 student district. But, but I don't think we have to worry about that. That's that type of a district. There's like Barbersville and some of these places. But, but there's, but I do think we need to be aware of where compares other districts, other districts.
Well, I guess that's the negotiation of if we have to.
We definitely want to have a salary that will attract people to work here. So if that, yeah, so if that seems a little low, then we definitely need to heed that and consider.
I don't know if it's low, but I think we should look together at the comparison of, I think we should see the comparison of the urban districts in Texas, but also the hill country districts.
Oh, yeah.
Because like.
I could put something together on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Because we also not allowed to decide this.
Yeah, I could put something together on that.
That's not decision.
So teachers who are making 50 by those.
I know.
So. 78, you know, so.
Part of what we were basing it on, just the conversations with the superintendents that we had at AAAS, most of them are in the 340, 350 range right now.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. All right, so I think we've gone through our agenda. I'm going to summarize a couple of the to-dos. Y'all tell me if I've forgotten anything. But GR is going to send us a draft of, or do we already have it? A draft of the survey? And we're going to make minimal feedback on that, if any.
Thank you, thank you.
Very minimal feedback. If you guys can propose a question though to us about the levels of openness that we would like to add, remember that one question to the survey? That would be very helpful if you guys could draft that question for us. So that's what, number one. We're going to have 48 hours to give feedback and we're going to want to make sure trustee Zapata has that link live by her Saturday and community engagement meeting. We're all going to go out there and do some community engagement with our own people, with the CACs. So we'll work on that. We're going to, y'all help me, what else are we doing?
The small group.
We're going to make a plan for our extra engagement.
Oh, yeah, we're going to make, our little small group, yes, is going to do a plan for the extra engagement, finalize that the next couple of days.
And get feedback on extra costs.
Yes, and get the information on how much that's going to cost us. And the small group will also discuss with GR the approval of all advertisements, which seems pretty straightforward. I'm like, yeah, sure, that's good. And, you know, we'll continue having discussions on that salary comparison. So are there any other to-dos that we've left off?
Jacob. We're going to send you a comparison for you to look at on the salary issue.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Okay, Jacob, I know you're going to be thinking about how we might do engagement with the community over spring break and schedule with Ally and all that. So thank you all. I want to close by just giving an opportunity, I'll report, but if any trustee wants to say just like a few words, just kind of like how are you feeling about this? How are you feeling about the possibilities ahead of us for new superintendent and how awesome we are? Because we know folks are going to be watching this. But I, yeah, anybody really wants the same thing, trustee Zapata, would you like to?
I have a question. Gary, I think he mentioned that there were superintendents that have deputy superintendents. I'm wondering if he had information with the salaries. You know, was there, first of all, how many work that way? The cause to have that kind of, that kind of reason, deputy and superintendent? So, you know, he mentioned that some have deputies, so I'm curious how that, how that works.
Gary, do you need us to repeat that?
Yeah, I think Gloria and I were straight in trying to hear right now. Could we repeat, Robert's a lot closer, so I don't get somebody repeat.
Oh, okay. Shout at trustee Zapata.
So you mentioned, Gary, that some districts have deputy superintendents. So I'm just curious how, when the superintendents are just going on, how does that? I mean, is that salary, is that salary with the deputy superintendent that you mentioned?
No, probably closer, and Gary, she's asking if the salaries that we mentioned would be apropos basically for deputies or even assistant supers versus sitting superintendents. And I think the salaries that we're talking about or would be closer for us, sitting superintendents, deputies will probably be making a little less.
Yes, deputies would be making less. Where, what usually happens on this situation is that the, we're trying to recruit, you know, superintendents, but there aren't quite a few deputies that are making pretty good money anymore that are up to close to, you know, 275 to 300 themselves. So I think what we're trying to do is put the base salary to track. But we do have that little, that little sentence that we said, the final salary will be negotiated based on the candidate's experience and median board criteria. But regardless of the situation, this job is worth X amount of money, no matter who they are. We can fudge around with the experience a little bit, but if you have it too low and then you hire somebody, then you're going to be the training ground and you don't have to give them a salary to catch up or otherwise somebody will pick them off. The job's worth X amount of money.
Okay, so thank you for that question. So closing reflections, could anybody?
I have just a brief. I want to thank you, Gary and Gloria and Robert for being with us. And I think trustee Hunter said earlier that we are a microcosm of our community. We know our community well. And the questions we're asking, the depth into which we're going, our community loves the weeds and our board loves the weeds. And it comes from a place of deep love and faith in this district and a real understanding, not just on this board, but within our staff, our community, our families, of how important this decision is and how much we all want to work together with you, our community and with each other to get it right, to get the right person here. And then to really lean in with that person who chooses us and the person we choose to work together, to collaborate together, to bring that person fully into our community. So I appreciate you, the beginning of that tonight and all that we're going to do ahead. So thank you for that. And I really want to challenge my colleagues on the board to really think, think together about how we engage and support the person we choose to really set them up for success with us and with our community. So something I'll be talking with my community about as we go out there as well. Thank you.
Princess.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else have any reflections? Well, thank you all. I think, really appreciate it, thank you. I know, I feel really good. We're going to, I know we're going to find somebody who's a good fit for us. I really do and I believe in this board. We're going to do some really amazing things together. Our kids deserve it and that's why we're all here. So thank you. And I think I can adjourn this meeting. All right, so Secretary Boswell, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to adjourn. I'll say, raise your hand, the motion passed. If you honestly believe the meeting has been adjourned at 2:20, I'm sorry, 9:24 PM.
It's not Thursday.